... got convictions for first-degree murders in a disproportionate way, based on their race, based on their age, and found themselves sometimes having a life without any possibility, any possibility of parole. And I was wondering if you might be able to just share a couple of those stories while you hold my time, please, on this, and then I'll make some concluding remarks. Ms. Cale?
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Calvin, and I'm a researcher with Human Rights Watch, and we've spent the last year and a half looking at how California uses this sentence with juveniles. Among our findings are the fact that in cases, in many of these cases, where there are co-defendants, these juveniles tend to be acting with adult co-defendants. But more disturbing than that is the fact that in 56% of the cases with adult co-defendants, the adults get a lesser sentence than the juvenile. What SB 999 does is substitute a sentence for, instead of the life without parole, these juveniles would get 25 years to life, also a very harsh punishment. Under California law, they would have to serve 25 years before being eligible for parole. There'd be no guarantee of parole. What this bill does is simply give the opportunity to earn parole, the opportunity to ask for parole. It gives a second chance to people like Anthony C., who was involved with a robbery, but his involvement happened in over a five-minute span. When a friend turned to him, he was 16, and said, "Do you want to come with me and rob these people?" And in a quintessentially adolescent way, his response was, "I don't care." And they walked over to these other people, and as the robbery started, the victim said to Anthony's friend, "If you don't kill me, I'm going to kill you." And Anthony told me, "I thought our bluff was called. I thought it was over. I turned around to pick up my bike." And as he bent down to pick up his bike, his friend shot the person and killed him. And under California law, Anthony C. is responsible for that other individual's actions, and he is serving life without parole.
Expressing his views on first-degree murderers, District III Councilmember Dennis Zine asks, "Who's going to stand up for the victims?"
I believe in human rights. I also believe in respect for human dignity. And serving nearly 40 years in the Los Angeles Police Department, I have discussed with murder suspects what they've done. Many times, they have no remorse for their activity, for their action. And we're talking about first-degree murder. We're talking about an individual that commits first-degree murder, willful and wanton killing of another human being. I'm sure we look at our crime wave, and we look at the reduction of crime in the City of Los Angeles. We look at deterrence. We look at reality. And I think when an individual commits first-degree murder, the most heinous crime in society, in civilized society, we can't then soften what are the rules? What are the regulations? What are the consequences? We're not talking about children. We're talking about 16 to 18 years of age. When you look at the criminal justice system and how much evidence it takes, and the trial, gathering of evidence, the witnesses, the family, the survivors, the mothers of the murdered victims, the fathers, the sisters, the brothers of murdered victims, what about them? Who's going to stand up for the victims? When someone takes a life, first-degree murder, and they are convicted, the consequences need to be severe so we don't have more gang murders, more drive-by shootings, more little babies being killed in the streets of the City of the Angels. I think it's outrageous when we have a reduction in crime, and we want to soften the penalty for consequences of the most heinous crime in civilized society. We're not talking about a traffic violation. We're talking about first-degree murder. We can't reduce the sentence. We can't show that we've got to reduce the rules. All we'll do is encourage that we're a soft society, and what about the victims? I'm concerned with the survivors. I'm concerned with the grief that they have to suffer every single day. And we see it on the news when an innocent child is killed. Mr. Reyes' district, there was a young baby who was killed. What about the relatives of that young baby? What about the gang-bangers that terrorize society that want attacks from the vendors, or they're going to use lethal force? When you're talking about a 16- or 18-year-old that gets convicted of first-degree murder, I will venture to say that is not their first time in encountering the criminal justice system.
We are failing our youth as a society, according to District One Councilmember Ed Reyes, who talks about the flexibility that's allowed in the new legislation.
The example that was given, Anthony C., in many ways, we do have a manipulation of our youth when the gangs, when the prisons direct young people to do certain things. That's been documented. I'm not saying anything that everyone doesn't know. But I also look at the fact that we, as a society, have not given our youth a chance in many, many instances. You know, Anthony C. was there because he had nowhere else to go. He went to the wash because there are no playgrounds in his area. He's there because his schools are failing him. That's our fault. But what I see in this legislation, some flexibility, I'm not saying we're getting softer on crime. The individual who shot and killed that person, I'm assuming, is accountable for that, for that action. But Anthony C. was turning around. He put his bike down. He was going away. And he's going to spend the rest of his life in prison. So I see this legislation going down a very fine line. But with a heavy heart, I see that we, as a council, have significant influence when we make these resolutions known to the public. So I understand what I hear from Councilman Zine, because he was in the trenches. When you look at the eyes of the mom and of those who have been shot and killed in my district, and it happens a lot, there's a real consequence. But I think of the mom of Anthony C. I think of the brothers and sisters, the family of Anthony C., who's wondering, "Who's helping her son?" He did not pull the trigger. But the process sees it one way. We're asking for that flexibility. I don't see that as softening. I see it as trying to become a little bit more human in how we treat our youth, because we are failing them as a society. And so I think there's a direct link between how we treat our youth and giving them a chance to become good citizens.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
That matter passes.
You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending January 25, 2008. On behalf of Martine Martinez and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Meeting for Wednesday, January 30, 2008. We are here in John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month, when we meet in Van Nuys City Hall. This Friday, our next meeting, in two days, we will be in Van Nuys City Hall, so please join us there. We want to welcome all of our viewers on Channel 35. We're broadcast live through Channel 35 and the city's cable system, and rebroadcast as well in the evening. I want to welcome those of you who are here in council chambers and our friends that are over in Van Nuys City Hall chambers as well. We have our agendas available to the public online at lacity.org, in person at the city clerk's office, or in council chambers. Our agendas are split into items that have already received public hearings and those for which public hearings have not yet been held. All items will receive a public hearing either in committee or here in council. If you'd like to speak on one of the items that has not yet had a public hearing, please fill out a speaker card in the back of the chambers and give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to make sure your comments are heard. If you have comments of a general public nature as well, or items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction, please fill out a speaker card and just put "public comment" in the upper right corner, and we will hear your comments as well. If you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always fill out speaker cards there in council chambers, and via teleconferencing, we are able to hear you, hear and see you here in council chambers and on Channel 35. So please avail yourself of that capability. And we are also broadcast through the World Wide Web at our city's homepage, lacity.org. You can catch us live there, or any of our archived video of past meetings through our video-on-demand feature. And finally, your telephone is always a great way to catch council meetings, too, by calling 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And city's council phone service will allow you to listen to any of our full council meetings, as well as our committee meetings. We are about seven minutes after the hour, pursuant to council rules. Council members should be here at 10:00 a.m. to begin the meeting. We want to thank councilmembers Alarcon, Grul, Labange, Perry, and Zine for being here with myself, Councilmember Garcetti. That makes six members. We are waiting four more to constitute 10 members, or 2/3 of our 15-member body, and have a quorum to begin business. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I'd like to call the following council members down right away to join us. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. We are awaiting your presence here in council chambers. As soon as we have three more members, we will begin the meeting. Thank you very much to the public for their patience as we await those council members. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for Wednesday, January 30, 2008. We are here in John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month, when we meet in Van Nuys City Hall. This Friday, our next meeting, in two days, we will be in Van Nuys City Hall, so please join us there. We want to welcome all of our viewers on Channel 35. We're broadcast live through Channel 35 and the city's cable system, and rebroadcast as well in the evening. I want to welcome those of you who are here in council chambers and our friends that are over in Van Nuys City Hall chambers as well. We have our agendas available to the public online at lacity.org, in person at the city clerk's office, or in council chambers. Our agendas are split into items that have already received public hearings and those for which public hearings have not yet been held. All items will receive a public hearing either in committee or here in council. If you'd like to speak on one of the items that has not yet had a public hearing, please fill out a speaker card in the back of the chambers and give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to make sure your comments are heard. If you have comments of a general public nature as well, or items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction, please fill out a speaker card and just put "public comment" in the upper right corner, and we will hear your comments as well. If you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always fill out speaker cards there in council chambers, and via teleconferencing, we are able to hear you, hear and see you here in council chambers and on Channel 35. So please avail yourself of that capability. And we are also broadcast through the World Wide Web at our city's homepage, lacity.org. You can catch us live there, or any of our archived video of past meetings through our video-on-demand feature. And finally, your telephone is always a great way to catch council meetings, too, by calling 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And city's council phone service will allow you to listen to any of our full council meetings, as well as our committee meetings. We are about seven minutes after the hour, pursuant to council rules. Council members should be here at 10:00 a.m. to begin the meeting. We want to thank councilmembers Alarcon, Grul, Labange, Perry, and Zine for being here with myself, Councilmember Garcetti. That makes six members. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council We are waiting four more to constitute 10 members, or 2/3 of our 15-member body, and have a quorum to begin business. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I'd like to call the following council members down right away to join us. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. We are awaiting your presence here in council chambers. As soon as we have three more members, we will begin the meeting. Thank you very much to the public for their patience as we await those council members. If you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always fill out speaker cards there in council chambers, and via teleconferencing, we are able to hear you, hear and see you here in council chambers and on Channel 35. So please avail yourself of that capability. And we are also broadcast through the World Wide Web at our city's homepage, lacity.org. You can catch us live there, or any of our archived video of past meetings through our video-on-demand feature. And finally, your telephone is always a great way to catch council meetings, too, by calling 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And city's council phone service will allow you to listen to any of our full council meetings, as well as our committee meetings. We are about seven minutes after the hour, pursuant to council rules. Council members should be here at 10:00 a.m. to begin the meeting. We want to thank councilmembers Alarcon, Grul, Labange, Perry, and Zine for being here with myself, Councilmember Garcetti. That makes six members. We are waiting four more to constitute 10 members, or 2/3 of our 15-member body, and have a quorum to begin business. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I'd like to call the following council members down right away to join us. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. We are awaiting your presence here in council chambers. As soon as we have three more members, we will begin the meeting. Thank you very much to the public for their patience as we await those council members. The second quorum call for councilmembers Cardenas, Hahn, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Wesson. We need you in council chambers right away. If you will make your way down as soon as possible. Thank you.
Of course it's lucky. Here's a final quorum call for councilmember Cardenas, Councilwoman Hahn, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. If the sergeants-at-arms could please assist us in bringing down those council members or finding out where they are. If we do not have a quorum in the next few minutes, we will adjourn to the next one.
President, could I ask that you instruct the sergeants-of-arms to go to the offices at the committee rooms?
We always do, and they are on that already. Thank you. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Reyes, we have Mr. Wesson. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss. We are still awaiting one more member, in about two minutes. If you'll please make your way down right away. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and appall, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Parks moves. Ms. Perry seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weezer moves. Mr. Labange seconds. Without objection, those commendatory resolutions will be approved as well. If you can run through the agenda, please.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings. Items one through five are street lighting district ordinances, and I believe 12 council members are expected today. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the ordinances on the desk until we have 12 members.
Next items are also public hearing items, items six through 16, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings, and the ordinances to be presented on February 20.
Okay, without objection, we will go ahead and open the hearings, continue those ordinances until the 20th of February. Next items, please.
The next group of items, Mr. President, are building and safety confirmations of liens, and on item number 20, the department is recommending that that item be received and filed, inasmuch as ownership has been changed prior or after the abatement.
All righty. With that one modification, any specials? We do not have public speaker cards on 17 through 22, so we will go ahead and open and close the public hearings. Seeing no specials, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item is also public hearing item, and the applicant consents to a continuance to February 13.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Smith? Oh, Mr. Smith is here, if we can make sure that he's marked in, and Mr. Reyes as well. Okay, we have consent on item 23 to continue that till the 13th, without objection. So ordered. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there are 13 council members present now. Do you wish to go back and take the ordinances, the votes, on items one, two, three, four, and five?
That would be great. Let's take up items one through five. We'll open and close those public hearings. No speaker cards are submitted today, so go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 24 through 55. On 24, the committee met this morning, and the committee report has not been submitted yet. It is the commissioner.
We'll hold 24. Mr. Cardenas?
Special for Councilmember Alarcon.
Okay, 37 special for Mr. Alarcon. On 43, I'd like to move to withdraw this from the agenda and send back to public safety, item 43, the financial disclosure item. And Mr. Reyes?
Thank Council President. Item is 27, 29, and 30.
27, 29, and 30 for Mr. Reyes. Mr. Parks?
I'd like to move the budget and finance report on 55.
Okay. Budget and finance has been moved on 55. Any other? And 53 special for Mr. Rosendahl. And on 43, Mr. Weiss, we withdrew that from the agenda and moved to send it back to public safety. Okay? Any other specials? If not, let's go ahead, and Mr. Rosendahl is here. If we can mark him for these votes as well, please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved and sent back. Next item, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have been held, items 56 through 70, excuse me, have not been held, 56 through 76. Ten votes are required for consideration, and I believe there is a request on item number 56 to continue that matter to February 13.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing 56 till the 13th of February? Seeing none, we will continue that. We do have speaker cards on 59, 72, and 73, and 76, if we can call those special for cards from the public. Mr. Rosendahl?
44 and 47 forthwith.
Okay, without objection, we'll send 44 and 47 forthwith. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, item 60 through 70 special, please.
60 through 70?
70, yes.
Okay.
And we can receive and file 75.
Okay. Move to receive and file 75 without objection, and we will call special 60 through 70 for Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Garcetti, just I know if you have a card on 76, but we just wanted to make a change in that so that it will be a day of prayer and meditation.
Okay. If there's no objection to adding meditation, we will do that as well. All right. And is the balance ready to take up? Okay, if we can prepare the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items?
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Yes, please. We will take up public comment now, starting with Arnold Sacks. After that, we'll hear from Mr. Armando, and then we'll go out to Van Nuys. Miriam Fogler will be our first speaker out in Van Nuys, following Mr. Sacks and Mr. Armando.
Thank you. I'd like to spend this time making a few comments on yesterday's meeting regarding the transportation issues and why most of what we heard will fail in the City of LA, because this is LA. But yesterday, amongst the things I noted, you had a speaker from Baltimore, and one of the things he mentioned in his discussion was the word accountability. And as soon as he said accountability, he should have been tossed out of the room, because this is LA. There's no accountability here. Then the city speaker from Portland spoke about projects that are completed.
My friend could hear me say just how I feel about him. So I would urge every member of this council to quickly move this forward so that we can put this good man to work on behalf of the citizens of this great city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sales, is there anything you'd like to share with the full council? And we appreciate you very much for putting yourself forward for service, but anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to say it's an honor to be before this group. I grew up here in L.A. My father worked for DWP for 35 years. He was able to earn a living wage there, and because of that wage, I was able to go to college and pursue my dreams. My hope as a member of this, of the authority, is to have, to issue bonds that will create the same kinds of jobs that my father had, had, and help the people of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sales. And with that, let's go ahead and make this official. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Round of applause for our new commissioner. Congratulations. Next item, please.
Next item is item 27, and that was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. We're at a place in which many of us are trying to understand how we could use our asset base, our resources, our yards, in a manner that can facilitate more opportunities, both in economics, recreation, and housing, and green space. And so leveraging that opportunity while delivering our city services is a challenge. So my request was to essentially put ourselves in a place where we're not working against each other. The city yards make a large part of the territory along the Riverway in my district, and I know that is true of many of your council districts as well. The issue here is, can the departments make these decisions understanding that they're not in a vacuum? I think they can benefit from the big picture, and it's something we laid out with a very concerted effort, and I thank all of you for that support, and many jurisdictions have been involved in that. But now we, as a city, have an opportunity to step up. So I call this special because I know that there's a comprehensive report on city facilities that are being worked on by the Board of Public Works under the guidance of Cynthia Reese. The mayor gets it. He sees the advantage of looking at this comprehensively. The reason why I wanted to call this special is that there are some key steps we can take now so that we can keep the momentum and the levels of impact right in front of our constituents so they can see the difference. So I want to thank the departments for their hard work. We've had several meetings regarding this issue. It's a balancing act, but I hope the mayor's office and Public Works Department understand the value that we have in regards to our connection to our constituents. We have a celebrity in the house. We'll let them take their picture.
Folks, we do have an item that is before us right now. If we can please afford Mr. Reyes the courtesy. Go ahead, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues, for the courtesy of listening. Appreciate that. But the bottom line is, we have that opportunity. Let's allow that plan to occur, but let's not forget the short-term immediate gains that the motions had before us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and we want to thank the cause for commotion, Mr. Bob Barker is with us here today. It's always a pleasure to see him in council chambers, and thank you for your advocacy on behalf of animals in our city and throughout the country. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
I just want to ask a couple of questions here because I was driving through the area on that issue there. So this is trying to acquire the smallest tree yard, both on both sides, what is Figueroa Riverside Drive?
Right. If you look at the new designs of the bridge.
Right.
This opportunity near the birthplace of our city is right now covered with storage-type activities.
Oh, I got it, I got it. I'm just asking, on the bridge, is it still going to be the same angle?
No.
Okay.
That curl pin.
Right.
That pinches as you make that turn.
Right.
That's going to be smoothed out.
Great.
It's going to be set up so that we have a bike path.
Can the bike path get underneath there on the Allegiant Valley side, do you know?
We are trying to draw that connection.
Yeah.
The truth is, the lower support structure is going to be designed so that it'll have public accessibility.
Great.
We should have a viewing deck. We should have a place where kids can come and learn. We're looking at educational storyboards about the history of that pocket. Most cities celebrate the birthplace. Here, we covered it with track industrial use.
Right.
So this will be an opportunity to actually have these storyboards and actually become an educational tool.
Right.
The notion here is that if we have people there, we'll have, we'll lower the likelihood of, and I hate to say this, but having the folks who have nowhere else to sleep and all the ugliness that happens when you're desperate, that's happening under the bridge now.
Well, I just stand in support. I stand in support. It's a great opportunity to create a better place, and it is the south end of the Los Angeles River's most natural part, and hopefully can continue that as it connects with the Royal Seaco. And I hope there's a potential to get the bikeway underneath it. I know you have a vision to try to get it through to the cornfields. I just wanted to support you on that because we were fortunate many, many years ago to build a bikeway, but now we're trying to catch up. And I felt bad that in 1995, I think, Metrolink went in with a bridge that could have been here, which would have saved room for a bikeway, but went here, and we lost that opportunity. Maybe in all this reconfiguration, we could squeeze that in.
But we still, we are still owed a bridge.
Right.
MTA still has to build that bridge, and that's something that I need your help, along with my colleagues, to get the MTA to respond.
You got my help. They're owed to build a subway out on our Legashim, and they've got a lot of bridges and subway tunnels for pedestrians, but they don't always come through. I know I digged them yesterday. I don't want to dig them again today, Mr. Henry, Art Henry, the great representative there, but he heard me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Labange, thank you, Mr. Reyes. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 29, and that was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item number 29 is before us on the trust for public land, L.A. River rehabilitation.
Again, this is one of those northern file items that speaks to our intent to capture the value of our property. And colleagues, I call this special because I understand the deficit we're in, but if we take the smaller steps today, we can generate more revenue in the future. With a small investment incrementally, when you start looking at the reentitlement process and the added value to land that we control, this could potentially create more revenue and offset the costs that we take on today. So I just want to put that in front of us because this is one of those measures that has that opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 30, and that was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item 30.
Same message. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on item 30 as well and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
The next item is item 37, and I believe, do you wish to hold that on the desk for a moment?
Sure.
Was called special by Councilmember Aldacon.
Okay. Did, Mr. Smith, did you want to say anything on this one? As chair of the committee, you would have precedence on it.
I'm not sure why it was called special, but you want to hear it? Hold it.
All right, we'll hold that. Next item, please.
Item 53, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, we have item number 53 before us.
Yes, what I'd like to do is, with Ms. Hahn, send it to our Commerce Committee where we can take a look at it ourselves and talk more about the MAGLIF and how it fits in and get a discussion going and have people come before us if it's okay.
Is there any objection, colleagues, to sending number 53 to, Mr. Smith?
Ladies and gentlemen, I really don't object hard to this, but I wanted to let you know that we've been working on this JPA for the better part of a year. We made a commitment to SCAG, who has got to get out of the JPA, out of doing the MAGLIF work because their grant has expired, their work product had to be only in research, and they've done the research, and they have to trade it off and give it to somebody to take it forward. And so the JPA was written. We had a standing agreement with Ontario and the City of West Covina to complete the JPA by the end of this month, tomorrow being the end of this month, and that, we had kind of all said that was the case. Ontario approved it just a couple of days ago. West Covina is taking it up today. Our C.L.A. has worked with the Department of Transportation, our city engineers, excuse me, our city attorney, for months and months and months refining the language that finally met the test of the other two government agencies and SCAG. And so I really think we need to go forward with this as we promised SCAG so that we can continue the work, which now has to stop at SCAG and has to be handed off to an agency that can take it to the next level. I have no objection to the committee's looking at the whole concept of what's going on. I'd love to bring it to you and tell you some of the breakthroughs that have happened in the past month and a half, but we had made kind of commitments to see this happen. So if there's a way we could, and the important part, and for Ms. Hahn and Mr. Rosendahl, the important part in the JPA, the recommendation of the committee is not to appoint the city's representatives to the JPA yet. We'll have that discussion internally on who will represent the city, but let the JPA format go forward, let's sign the contract, and then begin the discussion, who represents the city and the message you want to take forward. I think that'd be the best way to go, and I would urge the council to go ahead and let the JPA itself go forward, send it back to the committee for the discussion on who represents the city and what the interests are at that point.
Okay, we have that motion. Mr. Rosendahl?
Just to explain.
Just in response, real quick, because Mr. Labange, Ms. Hahn, and Mr. Reyes.
Okay, just to respond, we have a SCR meeting tomorrow, which is the Regional Airport Authority Group, and SCAG is involved with us there. We just don't want to see redundancy with the SCR thing because we're all on the same wavelength. In no way, I think Mr. Smith's leadership has been outstanding. I'm 100% with him on it, but I wanted to have the opportunity at SCR to see how it's integrated tomorrow so that we're not being redundant or confusing each other. It was more an informational strategy that would then come back. But if it needs to be an issue here, I'll go with Mr. Smith. We don't need to go any further with it. But it's the SCR relationship that I wanted to get understood with SCAG, that's all.
Well, we could certainly approve that. We could take, Mr. Smith, that was a motion, Mr. Smith?
Can you say?
To?
I think we could accomplish that very easily by sending the concept of high-speed rail system to the committee for further discussion. Let's approve the JPA because it's just the legal language to initiate the program, and then let your committee take up the issues of what goes along with that.
Great. Without objection, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Super great.
Okay, Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. Look at that, get a picture of that right there, right there. So it's, I just want to ask, who's the expert in the chambers on high-speed rail? Because I just want to get some clarification, other than Mr. Smith. I apologize, Mr. Smith, I meant that. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
There's a high-speed rail proposal from West Los Angeles, Union Station to Ontario. There's a high-speed rail proposal from Orange County through southeast Los Angeles County, Union Station, San Fernando Valley, Palmdale, Lancaster. Correct? There's two different high-speed rails?
Yes, at this point, there's the north-south route that I know Anaheim and Orange County is working on. This is an east-west route from the west side through Union Station out to Ontario. There's also the state route, which is north-south throughout the state.
But what is this one that we're talking about today? Is this the state route?
No, this would be the east-west route that goes from the west side of the city. There will be a station at Union Station. There will be at least one station on the west side. There will be stations in West Covina and Ontario.
Right.
On the initial phase.
Yeah, I know. I talked about it a little yesterday, just a little yesterday, because I had the question. Does it make any sense to go and convert the Green Line to a high-speed rail line? The Green Line, which is at LAX, is anybody looking at that?
Well, I would, in terms of the Green Line, one of the things about high-speed rail is if it's going to work, there will be very few stops. It's not a commuter line. It is a line to get from point A to point B rapidly.
Right.
So I do not believe that converting the Green Line to high-speed rail would be advisable because it leaves out all of those people and all of the stops in between.
I'm going to ask you a question. If it is, but at least the right of way, see, I don't understand how they're going to fit it through West Los Angeles and where they plan to do it, and you have it existing right of way. You have Slosson Line, which we're talking about, and if the Slosson Line was slipped to a light rail line, which has multiple stops, and the high-speed rail, because you know from your travels, and I remember sitting in a town in England once, and it just goes by so fast, the high-speed rail, they do integrate it with locals, but speed is what makes high-speed rail.
That is.
I just wanted to know if we're looking at that aspect or if someone is looking at it in a global picture, pretend that, pretend the obstacles aren't there, but what makes most sense to try to move people? Because what I would like to see is used more is rail so we divert the activities at airport. I want to see high-speed rail. When I spoke with the advocates for LAX, the first thing I said to them, I support modernization and safety at LAX, and they all smiled, and then I said I support high-speed rail, and they frowned it a little. But I would like high-speed rail to San Diego, to Phoenix, to Las Vegas, to Fresno, et cetera. So with that being said, you're in tune with what we're doing. You're a point person there. I wanted to put that on the table. I did mention it briefly yesterday, but we probably should have had a deeper discussion on long range. I thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosendahl, I also thank you for your enthusiasm, but I thank Mr. Smith for his great leadership for years on this issue of high-speed rail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker, and Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I just really want to thank Councilmember Greg Smith for taking great leadership on this issue. I'm not sure it will be built in our lifetime, but maybe, maybe. But one of the, certainly, this is a very important concept for our region. There is the people aspect of this, but I'm certainly interested in the cargo aspect, and I know that this plan includes eventually a spur that would come down to the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach connecting to LAX. I have great hope and vision that one day we will be moving cargo in this manner. We know that as long as we have the trucks on the road, that we're going to have an incredible amount of congestion, pollution, cargo-related pollution still counts for about 2,400 premature deaths in California, and those are the kinds of things I think this type of project can address. So whether or not we want to agree today on the JPA, I think that's important, and then later in the committee, talk more about some of the details, the routes, the timeline, who is going to manage this project, who's going to construct this project. You know, colleagues, I sit on the Alameda Court of Transportation Authority. I am vice chair this year. I'll be taking over the chair's position in July, and that's already a JPA, too. They're well-equipped to manage and construct, I think, part of this project. I think they would be a good piece to look at, particularly as it relates to the spur that comes down to the port. So congratulations, Greg. Thank you for moving this through. This clearly is a regional solution to an incredible regional problem that we've had for a long time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank Councilmember Smith for his stewardship in this. I was trying to get this into Plumb Committee because of land use impacts, but as he stated, that's something we can take care of as this continues to progress because of our commitment with SCAG. But just generally speaking, in terms of funding, can you just speak to the whole funding dynamic, where it's at, what does it entail, and what commitments we might have? And I want to keep this positive, so that's the reason why I'm asking. Thank you. Please hold on.
At this point, the city is making no funding commitments. There was some federal funding that SCAG received to do planning efforts for high-speed rail. There is some money left, and the MOU calls for SCAG to transfer that money to the JPA to continue planning efforts. Moving forward, again, there is no funding commitment. This is early in the process, issues of station siting, issues of federal funding. I think the general sense is that a public-private partnership is going to be required here. The private sector is going to have to step up and come up with funding, and all of these issues will be back before the council multiple times. There will be no funding commitment that would not be subject to the approval of the city council in the future.
So this is a skeleton of sorts. Just the raw bones.
This is setting up an entity that's going to look at all of these issues, and that's really all that this is doing right now.
And I believe, we touched on this briefly, but this is an east-west high-speed line. The north-south high-speed line is a whole different picture, a whole different story. It's not relevant to this at all.
No, I think the sense is that if Southern California can, in a sense, get its act together and proceed with planning, I think it makes a north-south alignment with the state much more likely. And of course, this council, I know, has many issues with what that alignment will be, and including Palmdale and, you know, the larger transportation impacts of the high-speed rail, so.
Great. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I'm very pleased to hear this discussion, and so I can answer some of the questions for you. First of all, and a critical one for Mr. Reyes and I think Ms. Hahn, is we now have an unofficial proposal that's been given to us by a company called American Maglev, which is an operation in Atlanta, Georgia. And I invited Ms. Hahn to go see it. They have an operational test track. They have given a proposal to SCAG, which is sitting on a desk at SCAG because they don't have the ability or the legal right to implement anything. And that's why the JPA needs to go forward because that is the first thing we need to look at. But the beauty of it is, is a company that is coming in and saying, we're going to front the money for you. There will be no investment on the part of the city of L.A. or the partners in the JPA. They will front the money. They have investments upfront. We're going to be checking those to make sure they are totally legitimate and committed, but they are willing to build. And the good part, Ms. Hahn, is the first segment they want to build is from the harbor down to Hobart Yard first and then out from there. And they believe that they can build within three years if we do our part, and that is finishing the right-of-ways, which are all on freeways, run the center of the freeways, and Caltrans already signed off on that concept, and that we can then finalize the EIR, which is what the JPA's function will be. And that is where we'll take up Mr. Reyes's issues and all the land use issues and siting element issues. And so this is the beginning of a great, I think, will be a great venture, and while we may not be here to cut the ribbon, we will certainly see it in our lifetime, I think. And I'm very excited about it, but I know I wanted you to go down and look because as the rules are under the JPA, if we put a station in the harbor, then we'll have another seat on that board, and I'm sure, Ms. Hahn, you would be the representative, no doubt, for that location. So I'm very excited about the potential. There's been tremendous breakthrough in the last month. I know Mr. Parks has written on the high-speed one in Shanghai. Mr. Rosendahl, myself, Mr. Resine wrote on it, as well as some representative of the mayor, and everybody that writes on it is saying, why aren't we doing this? This is incredible. So it's a great opportunity. It's the first step, though. It's the framework from which all of you will then participate to make it happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, just to compliment Mr. Smith again on that, I met with the folks from Atlanta in his office, and I was astounded. I was absolutely blown away, and I have been publicly saying, this could be the bullet we've been looking for to literally solve our gridlock situation. We can provide right-of-ways. They set 100 poles that could go up per mile. It's a lighter vehicle than the one we saw in Shanghai, and the timeframe was astronomically quick, and the private sector would be financing this as a business venture. So what we do is give them right-of-ways. They put in the funding. It is a win-win for everybody if this can become a reality. And I got to thank you for your leadership on it and the JPA, and obviously, I'm looking forward to being on that JPA because it will be part of my district as well, and it will help us all the way around. So great work and obviously unanimous support, but we do need to discuss it from the SCAG and SCR perspective.
Thank you. Go ahead and open the roll on this item. As amended, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved, and it will also be simultaneously referred to Transportation Committee for further discussion. Thirty-seven, there are no outstanding issues on, so if we can take that up next, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item 59, and that was called special for a card from the public.
Okay, we've got Miriam Fogler on item 59, out in Van Nuys. Good morning again, Ms. Fogler.
Oh, the Hanson Dam. This is a very good program over there, but unfortunately, there's not enough publicity on it. And what bothers me the most is that, is that the way the city's budget is going, I don't know if we can keep it open because the way you're handling the budget here, so we need to get the city in line, and what Sharon Brewer is saying and what I'm saying, you got to make this work because Hanson Dam's a great place, and it's suitable for, of course, for the, I'd like to see the fair come there, the San Fernando Valley Fair. I think it's a good place to go. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll close our public comment on that item. Anybody wishing to be heard from council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is, Mr. President, Councilmember Reyes called 60 through 70 special, and do you wish to take them all up at the same time?
Yeah, let's take those together. We do have one card on that, Mr. Reyes, so we'll take that up first. Mike Bueller, if you'd like to come forward to address item 60 through 70, and then we'll hear from Mr. Reyes. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Mike Bueller, Director of Advocacy for the Los Angeles Conservancy. Embracing the ideals of the City Beautiful Movement, the Los Angeles River Bridges are monumental in design and massive in scale, even by today's standards. Built between 1910 and 1940, the styles of the city's monumental bridges evolved over time, from an early preference for highly ornamental, classical designs to simpler, period revival styles, and ultimately adopting clean and modern lines like those seen on the Sixth Street Viaduct. The viaducts range from 1,000 to over 3,000 feet. Today, major retrofit, widening, and replacement projects are being planned for several of these spans, including the proposed demolition of the iconic Sixth Street Viaduct, posing major threats to the city's unparalleled collection of historic river bridges. Although there is mandatory state and federal review of these projects and their impacts on historic resources, right now, there is no formal opportunity for the city's own Cultural Heritage Commission to participate in the discussion. Ultimately, that is what these nominations are all about. Designation will provide a role for the city to ensure that the proposed bridge improvement projects sensitively acknowledge and preserve the city's own unique ensemble of historic river bridges. HCM designation will define clear parameters under which project planning can proceed. As a result, we strongly support designation of all 11 bridges before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. We can take 60 and 70 all together, so I know we're not concerned about that. Does that have a staff come to the center, please? Thank you. As you've heard from the speaker, our bridges are huge, they're magnificent, they're historic, they play a critical role in how our city actually functions. When I called it special, and I understand we have a deadline, so we need to move on this, but first, I want to thank you for working together and putting forth the proposal and the report that we see today. But I'd like for my colleagues to hear how you are working together and how we are combining the priorities that these bridges have to offer. When I say priorities, given the river master plan, given the opportunity to link to the river, to actually create new possibilities of different modes of transportation with bicycles, can you just speak to that in general and just go down the table? Whoever wants to speak first, please introduce yourselves.
Well, I'll start. Ken Bernstein with the Office of Historic Resources in the Planning Department. I'm joined by my colleagues Edgar Garcia from Office of Historic Resources, Claire Bowen from the River Unit in Planning, Wally Stokes, and Carol Armstrong from Bureau of Engineering. These are These are 11 Los Angeles River Bridges proposed as city historic cultural monuments. All but one of these bridges already have historic status. They are determined eligible for the National Register of Historic Places and thereby are listed in the California Register of Historical Resources. What we've wanted to do is to avoid, in the designation of these bridges, creating any type of duplicative process or burdensome process that would impede the necessary review of repairs or upgrades to the bridges. And so we have had a series of meetings with Bureau of Engineering to ensure that we have a coordinated process that fits into the existing historic preservation reviews through the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and under the National Historic Preservation Act, whenever federal monies are involved, as they are for all of the bridge improvement projects. In addition, as a result of the request in Plumb Committee last week, we have had further discussions in the last week to ensure that there is appropriate thinking about connectivity from these bridges to the LA River Master Plan and LA River Priorities. There has been ongoing coordination, which the River Unit and Carol Armstrong can speak to, between the Planning and Bureau of Engineering on these issues. But we have provided to the council a summary of all 11 of the bridges that are proposed for designation, the status of the bridge improvement projects, and the opportunities for river connectivity at all 11 of those sites.
Great. Engineering, please.
Okay, Carol Armstrong with the River Project Office. We see this opportunity for the designation for the bridges as a great way to bring honor and distinction not only to the bridges but to the river as well. And we've put together an initial synopsis of how each, we see each bridge within the Los Angeles River Revitalization Master Plan's implementation. And there are great opportunities for underpasses and creating access to the river, doing river loops, and all the kinds of things that we're promoting in the master plan. So we think this is a great way to streamline things and get everybody working together that needs to be working together and see tremendous opportunity in the future.
Does anyone have a ballpark figure of what we're talking about in terms of dollars, given the bridge program? Does anyone have a handle on that? I mean, I want to put this in perspective, because we talk about improvements. I don't believe, because we're so busy rushing by in our cars, that we are giving these bridges the value they deserve for the pedestrians, for the bicyclists. So can we get a sense of a ballpark figure and dollar amounts of what this means for the city? Please hold my time.
Designation, I'm Wally Stokes from the Bureau of Engineering.
Pull the microphone closer to you, they can hear you better.
I'm sorry. I'm Wally Stokes from the Bureau of Engineering, the environmental coordinator for the bridge program. The designation, the matter that's before you right now, has very little effect in terms of what we're doing with the design of the bridge.
I understand.
But as a matter of course, for this program, as bridges have come up for rehabilitation and have come up for opportunities to widen them in most cases, we have been very clear about improving the pedestrian access and improving bicycle access on all of these bridges. It was, has been our intent from the onset of the program to make sure that the bridges do not serve as a barrier to pedestrian and bike access. And many of the bridges, many of the improvements that call for widening of the bridges are in fact driven by that need to bring pedestrian and bicycle access up to standard, bring it up to par. In addition to that, we have been working very closely with the River Unit, with the River Revitalization Program, and trying to put into actual practice within some of the programs, some of the improvements that they have called for within their document. We are in a unique position of having basically a $700 million program to work with.
Okay, I want to amplify that.
Right.
This is a $700 million program?
Yes, more.
And how many years have you been into this program?
I'm not 100% sure on that. I've been involved with it for about the last six years in the program.
For six years?
Right.
You've been digging into a $700 million program?
Right.
That's improving our bridges?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, please continue.
Okay. As we have worked with the River Revitalization Unit, we've identified several opportunities where we can creatively mix and match funds to carry out some of these objectives that are not directly bridge improvements but are related to bridge improvements, and the opportunity for efficiency allows us to do that at the time.
I think I'd like to ask, that, I, okay. Again, I know we are all focused on what's best for the city. So I appreciate the hard work you've done this past week. When I see an opportunity, I want to seize it and talk about it, celebrate it, but more importantly, let the folks know what we're doing with their tax dollars. When we come to the public and ask them to vote for public improvements, this is a very real impact. There's, you can see it? By the way, in the nighttime, are we going to see our bridges?
We're working on a program to light the bridges as we go along. And this is a little bit more complex than it might seem, as my councilperson from 15th District will attest to with her struggles with the...
But that's one unique bridge.
Yeah.
Which bridge are you talking about?
The St. Vincent Thomas Bridge, of course.
That's, okay. That is extraordinary.
Yeah, but trying to, you know, light the bridges is something that we're really just at the beginning of finding ways to do it in such a way that really dramatically calls out the architectural features of those bridges.
You know, by accident, it seems that the MTA and their rail yard, maintenance yard, that we hope moves eventually from there. But what they did is they moved their lamps a little bit, where they can actually see some of the architecture on this beautiful Broadway Bridge. When Councilman Hernandez was there, it was award-winning bridge that you can't see at nighttime.
Yeah.
From the bottom. You look at the Riverside Bridge, the Olympic Bridge, Sixth Street, Third Street, these are all beautiful bridges that connect to downtown to the east side, and they're dark. So again, colleagues, we have an extraordinary opportunity here. I thank you for all the work you're doing. I look forward to the progress report as we continue to design and create elements that stimulate opportunity so that we can literally talk about the pride we have in our history. So thank you so much, and ask for a high vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labonde is our next speaker. To be followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. I just wanted to thank Wally for his work and others in the Bureau of Engineering. Mr. Bernstein, I read that story in the paper. It seemed like, I mean, I've been talking about bridges for as long as I've been in the city hall, and you seemed shocked. Have you ever met Clark Robbins?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's a hero for the city. I mean, in just a little bit of history there, there was a City Beautiful Movement in the 1920s. I don't think the reporter got it totally right, but the City Beautiful Movement said, "Let's separate the grade crossings." And Merrill Butler, I believe, was the deputy city engineer. And the deputy city engineer was the driving force to create this design. How many bridges are monuments now?
I believe there are four. Three? Three that are currently historic cultural monuments.
What are they?
The fourth in Lorena, Glendale Hyperion, and Macy Street. Thank you.
Macy Street Bridge?
Yeah.
Good. Okay. And why, because it seemed like everybody had their head in the sand. I think the city's done a great job. Mr. Robbins took it up himself, because I think it was under, in Mr. Reyes's credit, Mr. Hernandez, but I think when they wanted to do the, was it the Main Street Bridge is when they stopped? They wanted to redesign the Main, they designed the Main Street Bridge in modern terms, and it was horrible. And right then and there, they stopped and said, "If we're going to touch any of these bridges," and Clark was the driving force, "we're going to do them historically." And that was the thing. And I know there's one time in the future, I think, Mr. Reyes, you have a plan for a flyover of the Main Street or whatever in the future holds. But it is a multi-million dollar project. I just do hope where we can, we widen it for cycling. I rode over the Hyperion Bridge, and I saw More Hail Marys since I was in grade school going down that bridge. It's just very tight. But I think safety is real important, but historic preservation. And I got a grant years ago for the National Park Service to do a study. Have you ever seen that study?
Yes, I have.
Okay, I got to show it to Mr. Bernstein, so you know that there was a whole study by the National Park Service. And I forget the man who was from New Mexico who came and did the work. And it's a great, and I believe I've shared it with you before, and I'll dig it out of my archives, so you have that. There's a lot of, we got a running start. We're out of the blocks on this. This is great. They're fabulous bridges. And I think, you know, all of them, from Washington Boulevard and the artwork in the WPA all the way through, I know, it's just wonderful. And there's other bridges too in the city that I hope we kind of look at that as well. What else could we do to help on this? Other than straight money?
You know, this, these nominations are really a recognition of what many have, we've all known for many years. These bridges have had historic status, but they've never been recognized here at a local level as city historic cultural monuments. They've been recognized as eligible for the National Register, part of the California Register. And this is really, in many ways, a tribute to the city's own stewardship of these bridges, Merrill Butler through Clark Robbins from the 1920s on through today.
Is the Figueroa Street Bridge, is Figueroa Street Tunnels, which is now the Pasadena Freeway, are they monuments?
Oh, Figueroa Street Tunnel, I don't believe is on the National Register, or has not, has not been declared eligible for the National Register.
Right, but they're tremendous, because that was old Figueroa Street before, was the Pasadena Freeway. People are fabulated, fabulous, or fascinated, excuse me, with that whole detail. So I just want you to dig a little deeper and look at the National Park Survey. They came out with a full team, and there were students from Berkeley, I believe, who lived at Occidental for the summer and did a lot of research. Could it be 10 years ago? Maybe, or eight years ago?
I believe it was a little bit longer than that. Basically, what they did was they compiled the historic architectural engineering record files for the bridges that were deemed eligible at that time. Since then, California Department of Transportation has gone back and looked at all of the bridges within the city and added some additional bridges to the list of what they find to be eligible. They're called monumental bridges, if you will. A couple of those bridges in your district, one of them is Riverside Zoo, just came up on the...
Right. Got to widen it a little, too. It's a little, not as long as the Hyperion, so not so many Hail Marys, but it's too narrow there with the freeway crossing.
Well, we're going to widen, we're, we have an environmental document circulating in preparation right now to widen that bridge and to do a couple of things in terms of connecting bicycle paths and making access to the, from the bridge to the bicycle pass, you know, safer.
And I know when Mr. Reyes is a deputy, I know it worked hard with Mr. Hernandez. I know Mr. Faro, one of his last public events was to go to the dedication of the Buena Vista Bridge, which is beautiful over the cornfields, and the work of the Street Lighting Bureau to restore the lights, that was really wonderful. I'm just proud of the bridges of Los Angeles, and I'm proud that we put this all together. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Reyes. I stand for it. But let's get that report to them, because they'll be further out of the blocks and understanding the details necessary to get them the status. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weeser.
Thank you, Mr. President. A number of these bridges are in my district, and on one of them in particular, we're going through a community process right now to determine how do we make that bridge safe? And that's the Sixth Street Bridge. There's some structural issues there. A number of community meetings have been held as to whether we totally redo it, replicate the historical structure, or try to fix what exists. How does this affect that process? Excuse me, one moment, please. Mr. President, can you ask the chamber to quiet down a little bit?
If I can have everybody's attention, please, and have the sergeants-at-arms assist us in...
Thank you very much.
...asking folks to take their conversations either outside or to halt them. Thank you.
To answer your question, all but one of the bridges before you today already has historic status, as I indicated, eligibility for the National Register listing and the California Register. And as a result, there's already a significant historic preservation review process. There would be a full environmental impact report prepared on the Sixth Street Bridge and on any other project that might have any type of adverse effects to the historic elements of a bridge. There is also a process called Section 106, which refers to the...
Hold my time, please. Go ahead.
To the National Historic Preservation Act. And whenever federal funds are involved, there is a process of review and consultation. What this would do would be to insert the local Cultural Heritage Commission, our city's own historic preservation commission, into that discussion. We're not trying to give anybody veto power or create a duplicative process, but to allow the Cultural Heritage Commission the opportunity to review the scope of work, potential impacts, and to comment as part of the SEQA and Section 106 process. Designation as a historic cultural monument also does allow for demolition. If appropriate findings are made, demolition can occur to our designated city historic cultural monuments if there are not feasible alternatives.
So this process has been going on for months to determine what to do. Now we get this designation, does it, but the discussion hasn't included the possibility of having a local designation. Do we need to now go back to the community and say, "Wait a minute, now there may be a different process, there may be some other things to consider"? What should I tell my constituents?
If I may, Consulman. The processes, what we have sought to do here is to recognize that the processes in many cases overlap. So basically, the designation by, as a local landmark, does not add anything more, if you will, to the review process than is already in place. But what it does do is it allows the, it encourages consultation between the Department of Engineering, the Bureau of Engineering, and the Cultural Heritage Commission on what it is that we intend to do with the bridges, why we're proposing to do these things. And it occurs, what we have formalized now is that involvement at an early enough point in the process so that they can have some influence over the outcome of the decision. But with respect to how that impacts the public discourse, there is no difference in what we're already doing. Anything that we do to any one of these historical bridges under SEQA is going to be deemed an adverse effect. And as, with it having that adverse effect, that's going to trigger an environmental impact report for any one of the, anything that we do that really touches the fabric, you know, so to speak. When we go through the EIR process, at the end of the process, the certification end is going to come back before council. And along with that certification package, there will be a statement of overriding considerations, which basically says, you know, yes, there is an adverse effect. There's not anything that we can do about it and carry out the project. But we have looked at all of the opportunities and determined that this is the minimum adverse impact that we can get to, and therefore, we approve the project. So the, I just wanted to elaborate on the fact that, you know, the historic designation of section, or the historic national listing eligibility confers that level of protection on all of the structures.
Is the First Street Bridge designated?
Yes, it is.
It is designated.
And it went through that process?
It went through that process.
Yes, sir.
And what are we doing? Are we changing any historical significance? Are we mitigating that? What is it that we're doing on the First Street Bridge?
The, the general strategy has been, in cooperation with SHIPOL, to try and replicate to the extent possible what was already there, and that's what we're doing, you know, with First Street.
So there was a need to widen the bridge, which was probably considered necessary for some language, legal language that is used. And so it allowed us to demolish what's there, but under the standards required by the local designation, did it require us to replicate it? Is that...
No.
No? We did that, that was a choice we had on our own.
That's correct. As a matter of fact, the First Street wasn't even a local designation, you know, at that time. It's one of the bridges that's coming forward now for the local designation.
Once again, because it has the National Register eligibility and California Register status, this went through review through the State Office of Historic Preservation. And those mitigation measures, the replication of historic features, were included in the SEQA and Section 106 process. Again, while it would have local historic status, the same standards would be used to review the project, and the local review would take place on a parallel track, really an integrated track with the other levels of review.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thanks very much, Mr. President. Quick question. As you know, the First Street Bridge runs between the First and the Ninth, and we've been, my office has been very... been, my office has been very deeply involved in the Pickle Works Building because of the expansion of the bridge, and, you know, very concerned about the loss of reasonably priced housing over there, and I'm hoping that we'll come to some accommodation on that issue. But tell me, what's, what has the, I guess, conflict between the Pickle Works Building, basically, being in conflict with the expansion of the bridge, what has it done to the budget on the overall project?
I couldn't, Councilwoman, I couldn't give you an accurate figure on that right now.
Can you give me a general figure? Because I know it's already over budget, I think we've already spent all the money we have, but I just want to know, and just give me a range, like, I think we've already spent more than 12 million, and we haven't done anything to resolve the issue of the Pickle Works Building yet, that's still an outstanding issue.
I believe the acquisition of the Pickle Works itself and the necessary funds to secure and hold the property was someplace in the range of 11 million dollars.
Okay, so I was pretty close, I said 12 million, and we've already spent that, right?
Right.
Okay, so we're basically out of money on that one, right?
No, I, I, please define for me what you mean by out of money.
Well, we're still, the Pickle Works issue is still unresolved. The bridge is going to expand. It's my understanding we're going to have to basically tear down half the building, at least, to accommodate the expansion of the bridge. It was, for better or for worse, contextually built around the same time as the bridge, so, you know, it added and enhanced the architectural and historic context of the bridge and gave it presence. And it's also a loss of housing that was affordable in the area. And I think you know that I am trying to work very hard with engineering and with the state to resolve this, so that we can still find some way to achieve our goals, which are to get some housing over there, create some green space, and accommodate the expansion of the bridge. But my concern remains that there may not be enough money. Hold my time. You got any thoughts on that?
Well, we're certainly, at this point, the schedule dictates that we move forward with the construction of the bridge as expeditiously.
No, I'm not suggesting that we stop the construction of the bridge, I just wonder if you had any thoughts on that.
I'm just, I'm just trying to frame this, you know, my response to that. Given that dynamic, given that need, what we have been trying to do at this point is to come up with something that will hold the Pickle Works. We want to do the cutting of the Pickle Works so that the bridge expansion can, can go forward, and delay, if you will, the final determination as to what is going to be, I'm sorry, delay, if you will, the final determination as to what is going to be the disposition of the structure itself.
Okay, one other quick comment for the record. The arches or the vaults underneath the bridge?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure what the proper term for those are. What are those called? Hold my time.
A vault would be a good designation.
All right, well, there had been to some discussion with the city architect and Mia Lehrer, who's done a lot of consulting work, that we wanted to make sure that those were engineered, even with the expansion, so that at some point, we can use those for retail spaces, like independently owned and operated restaurant spaces, things like that, that would encourage pedestrian activity and community neighborhood retail spaces. Is that something that you intend to do?
Yes, ma'am. It is already incorporated within the design of the expansion of the bridge.
So for the record, that's something that we can expect to come out of this, is an opportunity to create more independent, community-based retail opportunities with this expansion.
That is correct. And with the cooperation of the river revitalization people.
Hold my time.
Carol Armstrong has introduced us to a group of people, and we're trying to develop a master plan for that entire area. So I'll let her speak to that.
Well, we have been approached by people that are interested in the area of looking at how the First Street Bridge may provide opportunities to do river revitalization-related development. And so we've been in contact with people in your office, people in the mayor's office to discuss possibilities, because whether the pickle, you know, with the Pickle Works Building, it's a historic structure, the bridge is historic, there's the opportunity under the bridges, and it's, it's really exciting how we can make connections into the community and get greening as well. So it's kind of a multi-benefit project that is very consistent with the LA River Revitalization Master Plan.
Thank you very much. There's no other speakers?
Just want to let you know for the record here, can I speak?
Yes, Mr. LaBanche.
All right. I did find, thanks to Justin Robinson and my staff, ran up, this is the Los Angeles River Bridge project that was done and by the National Park Service, which came out, and Eric Laurie, I believe, was in Van, how long is Van Toron, the city engineer, how long, when did he go back to San Francisco? When did he go back?
Vic Troyan.
Yeah, Vic Troyan, when did he go back? 10 years?
Yeah, 10 years.
10 years, all right, this is it here, so I'm going to ask, if you could, I'll loan this to somebody that can make copies and share it with everybody, and including also the other thing the National Park Services did on the Arroyo Seco, which I think is the same too. But you got to, someone's got to raise their hand and guarantee I'll get it back.
As a matter of fact, they already have it.
You have this?
And it's also online.
Okay, good.
Both those reports are also available online.
Very good. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on this item, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you all very much, appreciate it. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item 72, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, we have cards, public speaker cards, Miriam Fogler out in Van Nuys will be our first speaker.
If we would stop these special fee waivers, like the mayor called us, that we're having, and the Daily News saying the city is in the dark ages here with the budget, and you're being scrutinized, even if S fails or F passes, you're still going to, you're going to kind of make the cutbacks on these limos, these cars, and if it does pass, you're going to keep them. Mostly, this is the idea, is the waste continues, and that's why I'm voting against S, and that's why special fees have got to stop here right now, because I was here Friday, and I wanted to speak on the special fees on Friday, and you didn't let me do that. And I was against the Grammys getting 124,000, and today, there's some more waste on here, and Sharon Brewer is going to give you that tally. And I'm telling you folks, if you want to do something for the public on fee waivers, you do it for services only, essential services, to help, the city provides services to the public. It's fine if you want to have an information booth day with, to help the people understand what departments they have here in the city, what, open up City Hall and make it open to the people. We can fill this auditorium and have coffee and cookies here on special fee, to bring people in, to get them involved in being part of the city. What's going on here is you're giving money to special interests like the Kings. What is going on here? You don't need to spend all this money, it's a waste of money, if you're wasting it. And we need this money for our essential services, and I'm not taking cuts that we need for our services. We need the city here to be in good, on par with the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Matt Dowd is our next speaker here in council chambers. Mr. Dowd? Would you like to speak on this one, Mr. Herman? On 72? We had public comment, we called your name repeatedly, so my apologies. 72, Mr. Dowd, is he here?
Not here.
Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that. Any council members wishing to be heard? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 73, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, we'll go out to Van Nuys. Sharon Brewer is our first speaker, she'll be followed by Miriam Fogler.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, I put in a card for 72.
Okay, why don't you speak to that too? We don't have that one, but our apologies, go ahead.
Yeah, I was after Miriam. Okay, first I'll do 73, it's a convention fee.
We'll come back for 72, go ahead, 73.
Okay, now that I've had time taken off. Anyway, it'll be short for 73, basically, this is an L.A. City Teachers' Mathematics Association convention fee waiver for $36,926. My question is, why is the city waiving fees for L.A. USD? They have their own budget, and they should be going and paying for these things through their own budget, another way of saving money. So basically, that's that, so I'll go back to 72, and maybe I can get a little bit more time. For item 72, specially vet fee waivers, we had four total, two with amounts, adding up to $38,417. Item B is $30,000 for Central Avenue Jazz Festival. The sponsors are CD9, CRA, and Cultural Fairs. Don't they all have their own budget? Item D is $8,417, 2008 Mayor's Day of Service, sponsor is CD11 and the mayor. Again, don't they have their own budget? The total for January for seven days is $510,796, so a half a million. For the six months, for July to December, 49 days of City Council, it was $2,848,083 plus, because you had 10 with no amounts. With some of the past fee waivers that have been done for the Grammys, 124,163, is it free to the public? Do I get to go? For the Kings, $5,104, that's sponsored by the L.A. Kings and AEG. For $33,548, T O R A H Dedication Ceremony, that's one hour for 300 people. $15,000 for the NAACP, it's at the shrine, it's live, broadcast by the Fox. You have farmer markets, $65,897. What I'm seeing now is that instead of the amounts being put in, you're going and saying reaffirm previous council actions, like January of 2007, with no dollar amount, so I'm now having to go and look for them. Again, not once has anybody mentioned cutting, putting a moratorium on fee waivers and stopping them, also with parades. Who are the people that are at the parades? LAPD and the Fire Department, DOT. Look at their overtime and how much ends up coming from these fee waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Miriam Fogler on item 73.
You're out of order, because 72, you voted on it, and you wouldn't even let Sharon have, have a say here.
We apologize, ma'am, we didn't see that card, and so we made sure that she could speak on that one, we will be reconsidering it, voting on it. Please speak to 73 now, thank you.
Okay, number 73 is another matter here. You're taking, what you're doing is, you're taking the city's money and subsidizing L.A. USD. This is exactly what you're doing with CRA. You're doing this whole gamut, going on and on and on. And I wish that there was Ernie Bernardi here to put you guys back in your place, because he was the beacon of everything here at the city. He had a biography in the Gazette, and people should pick it up and read it, because he was the, he was the man who, the hero to the people here in the San Fernando Valley, and he should be commended and should be memorialized, and should be remembered here at City Hall. As a matter of fact, John Ferraro's name should be taken down, and it should be called Ernie Bernardi, that, the, where you meet. So that, that hall should be called Ernie Bernardi's Hall, not San, John Ferraro. He's an embarrassment and.
Ma'am, if you could speak, please do the request for the exemption at the Convention Center, thank you.
I don't like that, what you're doing here, the exemption here, and you're thinking that John Ferraro is such a great guy for giving all this here at the City Hall, it's not. It's Ernie Bernardi, he was a hero. He would stop all these exemptions and these special fee waivers. This is disgusting, and this must be stopped. See, all this money that you're wasting could be very central for our necessities and our services, and give us more, you know, cameras, that we need to protect our city. I don't know why you people just wasting your money away and don't care, and you're going to answer this by God, to God.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Is Mr. Dowd here? Mr. Dowd? If not, we'll take up this item, which is an exemption from the Convention Center fee waiver policy for the Los Angeles City Teachers' Mathematics Association. With that, please go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
The Teachers' Mathematics Association conference fee is waived. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 76, and that was called special for card from the public.
Ms. Fogler, on item 76.
I heard about the amended vote, and I didn't even get a chance to see that, but.
The amendment, just, we'll hold your time, don't worry. The amendment was just to add the word "and meditation," so it's pair and meditation.
Are you going to give me the two minutes still?
I said I'd hold your time, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you. What I'm talking about today is, folks, we have to remember that we're here, we're here on the earth to do, when we came into this world, we want to leave this world a better place for the next generation. And what I said yesterday is that God, you have to answer to God, and God is the one that's going to judge you. So whatever you do here, and you're serving the public, and it goes both ways, the public has to also participate with you. You can't be, just have it all on you. We all have to participate here and pray to God, and have God help us, that you would become good leaders, that you would do the right things, if you, you know, to, from the people.
15 seconds left, ma'am, I'm sorry, the city attorney told us that pursuant to our speaker policy, you had reached the maximum, so go ahead, and 15 more seconds.
You've got to be kidding me. I used to be able to speak here for five minutes, it's on public comment. So I'm just saying you're not being honest to the public. You don't, we're to get an S passed. Please vote no.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney?
Just for the record, Ms. Fogler spoke on items number 59, 72, 73, and 76.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification, and thank you for your public comment today. We did public comment earlier, sir, as I said, we can't reopen it afterwards, but we said your name many times, and we ask folks, we do that at the outset of the meeting, but we look forward to your public comment tomorrow, on Friday, excuse me. So with that, we will close the public comment on this item. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred. Next item?
Their.
Oh, sorry, we have reconsideration of item 22. If we can do that, please open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And without objection, Mr. Russell has asked for us to continue that till the 27th of February. Seeing no objection, so ordered. Sorry, next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred. Next order.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Han requests to be excused Tuesday, February 19th, to arrive at 10:30 for city business, that meets council policy.
Okay, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Merzine requests to be excused February 12th and 13th, to leave at 12:30 for city business, those meet council policy.
Okay, that is approved as well.
Councilmember Weisart requests to be excused for personal business, February 5th through the 20th. Those all meet council policy, except for the eighth, a motion is required on that one.
Okay, the fifth through the 20th?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead, and I'll make that motion. Ms. Gruel, that takes us down to 11 or to 10?
Yes, it does.
11, okay. Ms. Gruel, seconds, those excuses will be granted.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, any business announcements? If not, do we have adjourning motions today? Do we have any adjourning motions? Seeing none? Do we have, do you have an adjourning motion? Please, can I ask everybody to rise in council chambers for our adjourning motions? Thank you.
I can't breathe my breath in here. Came down for.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Han.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in the member of Sister Lilia Clark of the Sisters of St. Joseph of Clooney, who served the people of Wilmington for 27 years, and she passed away on Sunday at the age of 82. Sister Lilia was born in Ireland, and she professed in 1951. Her first missionary assignment was to St. Peter and Paul School in Wilmington. She then was assigned to St. Catherine LeBeau School in Torrance. She served for 20 years in Rhode Island and then returned to Torrance. From 1981 until her death, she served the needy Wilmington families through the St. Peter and Paul Poverty Program. She survived by her sisters, Bridie Perry, Angela Cook, and Teresa Clark, her nieces and nephews and members of the community, and all of the Sisters of St. Joseph of Clooney. A mass will be held tomorrow at St. Peter and Paul.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? As a reminder, we will be in Van Nuys City Hall chambers for our next meeting, that is this Friday, the 1st of February, so until then, this meeting will be.